Good afternoon. Today is September 10th in the year 2025. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This special meeting is being convened to give the charter school applicant another opportunity to respond to the superintendent's recommendation. As the state board has instructed at the board meeting, the applicant must be provided with a short but sufficient time to address the concerns raised in the recommendation. We do have one action item that the board is going to attend to before we start. I'm sorry.
Uh, can I, do you want me to open?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to open open session at 4:31 PM.
I second it.
All in favor? And to continue. After we complete our one action for the evening, then we will move to the charter school application. At this time, the board has...
You gotta approve the agenda. You gotta approve the agenda.
Yeah, we're gonna do that too, but I was gonna ask another question. Everybody has reviewed the agenda? And can I get approval? A motion for approval?
Motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the September 10th, 2025 agenda as presented.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
The human resources report, has everybody had a moment to look at it?
Yes.
Can I get a motion for approval?
A motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the September, that's not December, it's September 10th, 2025, human resources report as presented.
I second that.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. At this time, we invite the charter school applicant to...
Can I say something before we get started?
Yeah, but while you, they're coming up and getting themselves together.
So, I made a statement last week. I was gonna read, but I decided to wait. I wanna make sure what happened last week doesn't happen again this week. As I sat down to digest last week's meeting, I got very disappointed on how everything transpired. I was disappointed in how both sides handled the situation. I'm disappointed in the condescending manner the Caesar presented with. I'm disappointed in the faces made, body language, and mannerisms displayed by both sides. I'm disappointed in the display of professionalism or lack thereof. And I'm disappointed in the combatatives and the tone that came forth from the charter school at the beginning. And I'm disappointed in the lack of care or effort from each side to assist each other. The school system is in a business of teaching and molding young minds to become viable contributors to society as they grow. Do you think this was a good example set for the students? Shouldn't we be striving to set a better example and holding ourselves to a higher standard? Shouldn't we be uplifting and offering a helping hand to our neighbors who are trying to do something good for the community? Instead of just stating you're insufficient, don't have the capacity, according to Comar, we do what we do, how about we say, "Look, this is how we found helped us in this scenario," or give some guidance or assistance? The appearance and actions don't reflect that at all. This isn't a competition. This is a new school and educational opportunity for our community. The entire sys... I'm gonna go a little here deep. The entire situation reeks of Patty Salines. Her bias influence is evidently still lingering in our administration. There's negativity, pessimism, and defensiveness in every aspect. And we all know she was dead set on denial no matter what. I hope moving forward, we can move away from the tyranny of the past and move into a more positive and uplifting future while setting a better example for our students.
Mr. Dreier?
And Matt has been doing that a great job moving forward. And I hope we can continue moving that forward and setting a good example for our students.
I'll just make a note that that was not on behalf of the entire board.
That's on me. I wrote that. That's not the rest of the board. But we need to set a precedent. What happened last week doesn't happen this week. And we all maintain professionalism. And we set a good example for the young students that are watching all of us.
Please come forward.
Could you move another mic from this side?
Right there.
Do you want this one over here?
Yeah, sure. This is gonna help you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys, everybody ready?
Yeah.
Before we begin, thank you, Member Dreier, Mr. Dreier, for your comments. I, we wholeheartedly agree. We wanna move forward with a positive relationship and repair any relationship that, now for now and in the future. We haven't even had the chance to really introduce ourselves to the new acting superintendent. And Superintendent Kibler, thank you for taking on the responsibility of overseeing the duties of superintendent in this school system. I hope moving forward, we all have a great working relationship and we can make way to repair any, any unfortunate differences that happened last week. With that, we are glad to be here today. We are the Queen Anne's Classical Charter School. And I have a short presentation before we begin. This is not just for the board, but it is also for, because this is being recorded, for the public to make, help the public learn about QACCS. So again, my name is Ashley McClay. I am the president of the Board of Directors for Queen Anne's Classical Charter School. Again, thank you for the opportunity for this. It's been a long time in the making and we are very glad to be here this afternoon. We're very excited and we are enthusiastic. Our group is committed and we are very responsive. We are responsive to the needs of the community. And we're here today because we saw a problem with the proficiency rates in the county. We saw a problem and a need to address it. And ultimately, that is why we chose to apply to for this charter school. We, we have put in a lot of time, effort, and work to gather information with our community. And we are excited that we are now here for this meeting and vote today. So, I wanted to just very quickly begin with the MSD definition of what a charter school is. Maryland charter schools are public schools which are operated by independent nonprofits. The charter is awarded by a local Board of Education, and in this case, our Queen Anne's County Public Schools Board of Education. And it grants the school with more operational autonomy than a traditional public school. Public charter schools are tuition-free and open to all students. The Maryland State Department of Education provides support and guidance to local education agencies engaged in authorizing public charter schools and charter school operators. I, I wanted to just put that out front so we have common definitions. And so, because there are a lot of questions coming at everybody, us, you guys from the public, about what a charter school is, what it isn't. And so, I just wanted to have a common definition out there. With that, you know, we are, our mission is to provide an alternate means of education within the public school system. QACCS cultivates academic excellence, integrity, and critical thinking through a classical education model, preparing students for success in college careers and life. Through, currently, Maryland has 49 school charter schools with five more coming in 2026, already approved and on the way. And they've been active in the community and in the state for over 20 years. The first charter school started in 2002. So, it's really been a process. And we see these models working. They are a proven method and they are competitive. They help students achieve through higher performance. And, you know, in, in this sense, a rising tide lifts all boats. Because through their flexibility and innovative approaches, they have improved outcomes for not only charter schools, but public schools as well across the state. You know, this is, we see this, this is proven through a 2023 study from the Center for Research on Educational Outcomes. So, with this, looking at public schools in Queen Anne's County, what this charter school would look like in a very rudimentary organizational, you know, outline. We have the QA CPS Board of Education and, and that oversees lots of schools throughout the county. You guys know that, I know that, our board knows that. If and when a charter is extended through a charter agreement, we have our QACCS board. That would allow us, it would, there would still be oversight, which is why this is not equal, it's not an equal system. There would still be oversight by the QA CPS Board of Education. However, our QACCS school would operate with autonomy and it would have the ability to oversee this day-to-day school operations for our school. So, when we look at this, naturally, there are a lot of questions that immediately, people hear charter school and there is a lot of excitement and questions about that. Where is the school happening? Where is the money coming from? Who are the teachers going to be? Well, back up. You know, we, there's, there's so many questions coming at us from, from the public. But, you know what? Our first step is approval. And that approval is based on capacity. Capacity. Often, we have heard the words capacity and readiness lots of times over the past week. And that bar is capacity. We're not opening today, and it's not readiness. We are not opening for a year, possibly two years. If, you know, we, we talked about possibly extending the opening to 2027, we would be absolutely open to that. And because of that bar, the application, the bar is capacity. I, I just wanna make sure that everyone in the public are all aware of what that bar is to look like for this, for this meeting. So, with that, you know, there is a lot that goes on between capacity and readiness. And it's not, we are, we are approved and we're ready to go. No, that's not what happens. There is lots going on over the next year or potentially two years. This draft timeline lays out a plan. If this application is approved over the next year, what would happen, what that might look like? And so, if today we were approved, over the next 30 days, we would iron out our charter agreement. And we would also, after that, we would negotiate and look at posting the principal description, that application. And, you know, looking at policies, looking at regulations, having those approval meetings. And through that, we would, our team would look at hiring and go through the hiring process of hiring a principal. However, we would not have the ultimate authority to hire our principal. That would rest on the superintendent. The superintendent has the ultimate authority to hire the principal for our school. And that does not change. So, after that, we look at, you know, hiring out administrative options, handing out handbooks, enrollment textbooks, posting teacher, teacher descriptions, and, you know, making sure that we have support positions, registration, and many, many other options. Now, looking at this, if we are open in 2027, this gives us two years to really talk about ironing out the details, what all of that looks like, slowing down the process, and really making sure that everybody is comfortable moving forward. So, there is no rush because new can sometimes be scary. But new doesn't have to be scary when everybody is on the same page. So, with that, there was a lot of questions about buybacks and waivers. I wanna make sure that as we talk today, there are common understandings. You know, buybacks. A buyback is a situation where they are negotiated later in the process. It is a situation where money is exchanged for shared services, technology, software, personnel, and other services, together, where we work together. Whereas, the public school would keep money for some things that they're already doing in certain cases. However, it would allow us to work together within the public school system. Now, waivers. There was a lot of conversation about waivers. They are ultimately needed for autonomy for the school to work efficiently and successfully. There is no charter school in the state of Maryland that doesn't have a waiver. All, all schools in Maryland have a curriculum waiver. And that is because the state or the school system oversees a traditional, their curriculum. Our school would have a different set of curriculum and we wouldn't be, we would need that independence to really make sure that we are, have the ability to have our different set of teaching methods. Some of the waivers that we had requested, including, that were listed, personal electronic devices. I do want to make a note on that because that was discussed in the capacity interview. Now, our waiver for personal electronic devices wanted to, we did not want to have cell phones, personal cell phones, personal laptops, personal iPads, et cetera, of the student on during the school day and inside the classroom. We, so, because of that, we did discuss that through the capacity interview. And we would be willing to remove the first waiver as previously discussed. It's not necessary at this time because it does currently, it doesn't conflict with QA CPS policy. Now, we, we did make a note of that waiver. The reason why we put that waiver in is because in middle school, the teacher can bring out personal cell phones, it says in the, in the handbook and policy, to, in the event it's necessary. In, at QACCS, we would have student devices that students could use. We would not choose to use personal electronic devices. Other waivers are for curriculum development, recruitment and selection over teachers, procurement, as well as building use, being able to oversee and the building that we are working in every day, as well as naming our school. I mean, we are in the process of looking for a facility and it, when that facility and we are up and running, of course, we would want to name our school. That school would be the Queen Anne's Classical Charter School. These are not, as well as having fundraising authority, to be able to fundraise in ways that traditional QA CPS would not be able to fundraise. Part of the way that charters work is we add on fundraising ability. We have the ability to fundraise and we want to utilize that to the maximum extent possible. So, these waivers can be discussed in further detail. And if you have questions, I certainly want to discuss them further. But this is just an outline of what we're using, of the waivers that we had requested. Now, so, obviously, we all talk about collaboration. It's a big thing. And we really want to be collaborative with QA CPS. It's one holistic school system. And, you know, even though there is the public, traditional public school system and we have our charter school system, we need to have collaboration. We have the QA CPS Board of Ed. And, you know, through that, we have a charter, our, our board, and we have a charter agreement. But our, you know, I really wanna make sure that we know we'll be in continuous work with Mr. Bell and our charter school liaison, or whomever that may be at the time. We want to work with our liaison and we want to work with our public school system. Because together, we all want to make, we all want students to succeed. And whether that they are in the traditional public school system or the charter school system. So, with that, you know, we hear a lot about charter schools and accountability. They are accountable and we would be accountable through our, making sure we have charter reviews and those timelines. A lot of that is through the charter agreement, the financial reviews. Often, financial reviews in our charter, in charter agreements are quarterly. We have audits. And then, we're also accountable to our students through student success, making sure those test scores are up. All right? We wanna make sure that we have improved outcomes. But lastly, we're, we are accountable to stakeholders, family, families, as well as communities and partnerships that we're working with. And then, lastly, that charter agreement only is for a term of five years. We ultimately have to prove our success. We have to prove how successful we can be to the community. And we are up for reauthorization. We have to show our metrics and show that we can be reauthorized. So, they, we are accountable in multiple different ways. Now, last but not least, what happens? So, today, we have our vote. What happens after the approval of a charter? Once the board votes to approve our charter, we begin to work on the charter agreement together. We, we will review timelines. We'll work on buyback services. We will talk about student success benchmarks. And we'll do that and negotiate. Over the next 30 days, we'll really talk about what that, you know, charter agreement looks like, how we can prove to be successful to you, and how we can outline what will make our, together our boards, the most comfortable. We wanna make sure that, we have talked about this last, last week, but we are very happy to, if this will quell any concerns, that we would absolutely open, work to open in August of 2027 with collaboration from QA CPS so we can make sure that everybody, slow down this timeline and make sure everybody is happy with what's going on. We want to make sure that we can, we can look at changing the lottery system, you know, making sure that those timelines are in compliance with everybody. Right now, we have a March, on or about March 1st lottery selection. We would be happy to move that up. So, everybody knows where they might go, you know, in, in the 26, 27, or in the 27 school year. Okay? We, we can oftentimes begin negotiations well in advance of the school's opening, preparing for that readiness standard, making sure that we are successful in opening on day one. With that, I am open and our team is open to answering your questions today. We really want to engage in a conversation and we're thankful that you guys have allowed the public to hear about our school and this application process. Thank you.
I'd like to add one thing before the discussion gets into the substance. And that is, the amount of time that we've put in is enormous. But the amount of time that your staff put in was way beyond anything that was basically required. And also, building the knowledge was something that was above and beyond their regular duties. And I, I just am impressed and overwhelmed with the commitment that was made, not only by the school board, but by the staff and Superintendent Kibler. It was very, very much appreciated.
I appreciate that comment. And I know they do too.
So, we've received the answers to a number of questions that we sent forth. Are there any clarifying questions that the board would like?
I have a question and or comment.
Yes.
So, when we were receiving letters of support for the charter school, especially to our county emails, one thing I noticed during this is I didn't get, aside from, I think we probably received 50 letters or so, probably less than five that were actual parents' interest. Being on the board and being a member of the community and I am, my concern is the actual interest from parents, though there was a number of people supporting it that we saw with our letters from people that we all knew their names. Living in a smaller area, you know, people are very familiar. I personally have not, I'm surprised if there is an interest in the charter school. No one is expressing that to the board. Or at least, say, for example, for me, just being a member of the community. I am in a Facebook group that has probably 700 members in the community. And a question was asked about it and I thought this was a great opportunity that I could be voyeuristic and see what everyone's feeling because, again, we represent the community. And I was really surprised that there was no questions, no... So, where my concerns come from is what the general need is in our area with the, with the district of less than 8,000 students. Just, well, I just wanna say, where my concern is, I would feel, because people might think that we are privy to more information, they would be very inquisitive as to like the excitement. And my concern is that the excitement is more generated on your end necessarily than the actual parents that would be attending it. Not negating the benefits of the education, not negating the expertise that you all offer, just looking at it from a need base from our county. Sorry.
No.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'm agreeing.
That is my concern is that it sounds amazing on paper, but where are the letters from the parents that would actually want to go and enter? So, that is my concern, is the sustainability of this program. If we're talking about 200 students and we have 8,000 students, they should be sending in letters of support. And that concerns me, if that is just to be completely honest.
Okay. First of all, not that many parents know about it. We have received from the county commissioners an amount to have a direct mail to go to every household in Queen Anne County. And because of that, that will be our first introduction on a general basis to the parents. There is, we've discussed this amongst ourselves. How do we reach the parents? How, how do we get our message out? And we were going to do this, actually, we're gonna have the first letter go. It's a two-letter. We've got a plan for the direct mail. And then, we decided that it would build a lot of anticipation and a lot of excitement, but we don't have an approval. And there would be a, if we don't get the approval, then we have to go back to all those parents and say, "Well, we didn't get the approval, so now we're..." "Well, we didn't get the approval, so now we're going to reconvene and re-decide how we're going to proceed, whether through reapplying or whatever our options are." But we haven't had that mailing. We haven't had a direct contact with the parents in Queen Anne's County. There was one newspaper article, a very brief newspaper article back like in last year. And we received quite a bit of response from that. But we have not reached and been, have had not a chance to notify the parents that the possibility exists for a classical charter school in Queen Anne's County.
What was your method with the distribution of the petition that you circulated?
Pardon me?
The petition that you circulated that I think had roughly 140 some odd names?
It actually has lots more. I have one copy for, I didn't print out, copies for everybody because this is so extensive. But we have, we have this, all of this is petitions. And it's well over, it's well over 200.
And there are parents, there are parents that live in this county?
Yes, there are parents on there. We have people from Centerville, Graysonville, Queenstown, Chester, Stevensville, and Sudlersville, as well as out of county.
We, and we claimed, we claimed the petition of anyone who was outside of Queen Anne's County. There were other signatures on there of people who wanted it. And what I discovered when I was doing my outreach for letters of support, we found out that, at least in other counties, the elected officials, once the elected officials in Queen Anne's County got involved and started talking about their, with their colleagues, they would said, "Well, we would like to have a charter school and, and we'll support you. If you succeed, then you can be a role model and Queen Anne's County can show us and show our elected officials how to do it." That's why a lot of the elected officials are outside, they're all Queen, they're all Eastern Shore, but they're beyond Queen Anne's County. And that's why we accepted them, because they wanted us to succeed so they could copy us.
Do the petition signatures represent families in our school system or residents of Queen Anne's County?
Yes.
It's the resident, it's residents of Queen Anne's County in total for the petitions. Anyone can sign. However, a number of families are on there. I will say, I personally have talked to multiple families and we have tons. I have emails. People don't have time. I know the Lowe family, who is currently in, in Stevensville or Chester School, Kent Island School, I know, there's, I, I won't speak to, I don't want to just pull out names. But I personally have talked to a lot of families who are very, very excited about this opportunity. They're just busy, just like you and me. I had a family today, okay, who is a former State Board of Ed member. He is a education expert. He has two students in Kent Island Schools, one student in a private school, three kids and multiple different, and he founded a charter school. And he just didn't have the time to write a letter. But he is in full support of this charter school. We have multiple other families who I can talk to you about. I don't want to name names publicly without them being here. But it's 4:30 in the afternoon and it's very difficult for parents to get to this, to the Board of Ed. But I'm happy to really, really get in there and tell you about these families.
I think that once we have a direct mail, we can show you. If the interest from the potential teachers, we only need to start six teachers. And we have had resumes submitted in far excess of that, of teachers who are interested.
Just to add one comment, I've had, I've talked to families that are either current teachers or have students in the school system already. And unfortunately, there is a little bit of a culture of being afraid to speak up about certain things because they don't want that held against them. So I have personally spoken to more than, multiple families like in that instance. So that there are, the interest is there, it's just a certain times, people are a little bit nervous of something new and going against the grain.
If it's important to somebody, won't they find the time in life? If something's important to you and such as something this big and monumental for accounting and parents and they want this option, do you not think that they should have found the time, whether it was five or 10 minutes? I mean, after you put the kids to bed, you can go to, that's just weird to me.
But they complain to us and they, they won't even come here and speak and give a couple of comments.
I will say, I spoke to one parent and she, it took a lot for her to submit a letter to you guys yesterday about how she left the school system from her three children. Okay, she wanted to be in QACPS. She, her story is something that you guys need to know about because she talked to the principal, the teacher. She raised it with the superintendent at the time and the Board of Ed at the time. She ultimately left QACPS because nobody was listening to her and she begged, begged a private school out of county to take her students mid-year and said, "We will pay a full tuition because I can't, I am not getting the attention that I need." This is a letter that you guys received yesterday from that parent. And her story is incredible. And I've heard multiple other stories of families just like this who want to be in the public school system. And the, it's just not working for whichever reason. And they want to come back, they want to return and they want a new option.
The other thing is what?
I'm sorry, I would like to record to note that as I look through that list, there are quite a number of people from outside of this county, Annapolis.
And we, and.
Eastern.
There is a spreadsheet attached to the back which lists a number, which I, I've, we've been trying to type them in.
That's fine. But I don't want anybody to think that wholeheartedly that list is specifically strictly from Queen Anne's County.
No, it's not.
So there are other people that are putting up support behind you that, for lack of a better term, don't have a dog in this fight. So I just want people to understand, it's a broad list of people that have provided support.
One thing I would like to mention about that, because when we look at broad support, broad support can take many forms. It's not just families in the system. It is, it encompasses all residents, not only of the county, but also new and interested families. So when you look at a successful school, it ra, successful schools raise property values. People who have, want, would want a successful school and want more options in their community. And not only that, looking at that, when you see schools that are doing well, parents oftentimes want to move their kids into a better school district. So that leads families into moving to Queen Anne's County for more options and better options.
If there's anything that I think that best illustrates the popularity of the classical charter school, the one we visited in Frederick County, and I believe they have four schools, but the one that we visited has a waiting list of 800, a waiting list of 800 families. And of course, it's all done by lottery, but they still sign up for the lottery and they have 800 on their waiting list.
And they have 40,000 students and we have 7500.
I would anticipate similar situation here. The interest is, is high.
As someone that doesn't have students in the school system, that doesn't necessarily mean that there's not interest. There's interest for future students, there's interest for, just because your student isn't a current student, doesn't necessarily mean you don't have a dog in the fight as well.
This one was a big one for me. I know I asked you guys the question before, like, do you have petition? Do you have something? Because I, the only reason I know about the charter school is because I'm on the board. Would have no idea. Like, I've never heard anybody in the community like talk about it. The only reason I know is because I've been sitting here for three years. So did a lot of research on it because, as Kendra said, that's something like we all would like to see. And just looking back at, I came to the conclusion, after looking at some of the appeals the state overturned, when the boards used that as an example, they came up with it being overturned, saying that the local board's decision was arbitrary and unreasonable because there is no legal requirement to present evidence of actual enrollment and the commitments and creates an impossible barrier for approval of charter schools. So that kind of backtracked my thinking a little bit because, you know, we, speaking for myself here, nobody else, that, that is something we would like to see. But I know when it comes time for the actual approval, we can't ask to see that because as the state has said, that creates an impossible barrier for you guys, so.
If I could make a comment on what you just said because your concern about where the parents, have they signed up? Will they sign up, et cetera, et cetera? It's a chicken and egg situation for us, okay? We have talked to a number of people who own property in the county. We've looked at other property. Murray Waterman from Waterman Realty has done a lot of research on what we could do. And people ask, the first question is, where's it going to be? And we can't really give them a very definitive answer. So until we can get past this, have the charter, agree on whatever the charter agreement will be and how we go forward, we're in a little bit of a bind to do that. And I understand why parents, you know, I mean, they, they may have signed the petition, but it's difficult to go beyond that. And, and as you point out, it's, this is a difficult chicken and egg kind of situation.
There was just one thing that it's completely, probably relates or pertains to me and the board. But one thing that I was noticing with the response that came in, it was the post 9-3 meeting, the response from the classical charter school on page, let me go down, page 13 of the 31-page document.
Page 13, I think.
Examples of daily considerations for students with special needs. I would highly suggest that you change your language from autistic kindergarten child to a child with autism. It's very off-putting for the child, the parent of a child with special needs to have that be, in other words, you just don't say that. You know, that, that is, it is a kindergartner with autism. Just for planning purposes on anything you put out moving forward, that is extremely off-putting. Again, it's not a requirement, just it strikes a nerve. And again, I recognize that I'm, I'm going to be more in tune to something like that, but.
We, we tried to highlight multiple different.
And that's totally fine. And the examples you use, there's nothing wrong. It's just people first.
Okay. Oh, I did have a question about, I noticed in several of the things that was submitted on your end, it was, you know, you would target to a certain community once everything was approved and there was an agreement. If this is a lottery, even marketing to a certain child, how can you, you know, no one can guarantee that. So even with the marketing you do and it being a lottery, that is, you know, we don't, you don't know who you're going to get and we don't know who's going to win the lottery essentially. So how would that look with the marketing? And I know we've brought up, sorry, several questions about like the North County not being represented.
We will be absolutely marketing to all 8,000 students within our district, making sure that we are targeting to families, but also families that are not in, within the traditional public school system who are in homeschooling and have left the system. So we have a broad base, but we absolutely will be targeting to families across the, across the county. Really making sure that we are looking at all families of elementary school students who have students of that age, age bracket.
And we will make that clear, obviously, with the lottery processes. And one of the things we, we are planning to do is be able to provide some assistance in whatever area it is for parents to, when they have to file the application, to get into the lottery. So there's no guarantee, you're absolutely right. That's what a lottery is.
It's an educational process which we will initiate and, and emphasize. And, and the direct mail, as I say, is the first step. Every, every single household will receive that letter, whether or not they have, our parents have children or not. So it'll go to every private school family, every homeschool family, every family.
In addition to marketing through direct mail and having those direct mail options, we've also looked at making sure we are targeting libraries, the community rec center or YMCA, looking at fairs, looking where families are and will be to make sure we have an active presence there to educate them about our school as well as let them know who we are and what our school entails. Looking at, at all three libraries, both Kent Island, the Centerville, as well as the Sudlersville Library, while not a Queen Anne's County library, it's a private library. We have talked to them about hosting informational sessions there, making sure that we all have a presence there and making sure we have materials there. I'm, I currently work with the, the Kent Island Historic Association and we've really tried to garner, because they have a presence with the Stevensville Historic, Stevensville High School, we've looked at ways in which we could potentially partner to talk about bringing in, hey, there's, there's another school in the county. What does that look like through the history of schooling and, and public schooling throughout the county?
You mentioned starting in 2026 and then talked about possibly 2027.
Yes, we would be absolutely, we've put that on the table, moving this and that, that option can be put into, the opening option can be put into the charter agreement.
Is there contingencies or from a legal aspect on saying if you haven't met these requirements by a certain time, we push it to 2027 if we were to approve it?
Facilities funding.
In the statute.
Just facilities, that's it? So it can't, it can't be upon like finances or curriculum or anything like that, only facilities?
Sorry, can you say your question? I just didn't hear.
No, I just asked from a legality standpoint, if we were to approve it with contingencies, what contingencies could we put on where if they met them all, they could start in 2026? But if not, they would push to 2027 to give them another year to get a, get their stuff in order to be able to open? It was a question, what we can have those contingencies?
Reference in the statute is to securing a facility, well, securing the facility and then final approval by the board regarding the suitability of that facility. So, yeah. So the facility would, I mean, like you said, chicken or egg sort of situation? And the statute contemplates that.
Thank you. One other question was actually brought up yesterday at the meeting. We talked about 30-day, 30 days for the negotiations. What is the statute on, are we allowed to move that to an agreement where it could be 90? Because 30 days to hash out all of this is really, really fast timeline. So if we were to approve it, that 30-day timeline, are we allowed to move that to 90 days? So it gives everybody more time to digest the negotiations that take place? Or can we do an initial 30-day agreement with hashing out even more details later on? Or is it strictly just that 30-day negotiation period?
To do the entrance with the charter agreement?
Yeah, the charter.
That's.
I think that's 30 days.
30 days.
However, I would, our team would absolutely, if that offer is extended, we would be willing to negotiate that. But I don't know what state law, I think state law is 30 days.
Yeah, I believe it's 30 days.
30 days for the charter, days for this aspect.
I think obviously you're doing a lot of work after the.
Right.
Up and running in 30 days.
Could it simply state the buyback negotiation, like buyback services would be?
That's ongoing.
A lot of, a lot of the charter agreement is performance metrics, contingencies with funding, looking at the quarterly or and or whatever financial reviews that would happen. A lot of that is negotiated within a charter agreement in those 30 days. What, what standards we would have to upkeep for our charter.
And just so I'm clear on the application process, Queen Anne's County does not require any application interest from parents, like support, like evidence of support of actual parents. It's just the support in general, it's, it can't be, I guess not.
What kind of?
I know certain counties have different. I know certain counties have different, and when someone is filling out the charter application, do different counties have different requirements that have to be met in their application process? And is it a requirement to have letters of support? I'm asking, is it a requirement to have letters of support? Because I don't know.
You mean the parents' commitment to these?
Like, yes, we have names on there, but if they're not parents of students that would be attending this school and or in the current school system, is it a requirement? I know it adds much more to the application. It makes it a stronger application. But does the lack thereof, is it a hindrance to approving an application?
So per the state, no. The state says that in one of their ruling that because a board ruled that way, it was arbitrary and unreasonable, because there's no legal requirement to present evidence of actual enrollment commitments.
Not enrollment support. I want to know support.
Yes, so enrollment is the chicken or egg situation.
I just want to know parental support, is that a requirement? So it's like, though it's not a statute of mandate, does parental interest, is it, is it necessary for an application?
A local education agency, they, they oversee their, so each district, each county oversees its own process. And I'm not familiar with every application, but in this one, it's just asking for broad community support.
Trying to be clear, there's a difference between evidence of enrollment figures, which is a chicken or egg situation, and the broad community support, which I think you were asking about. Those are different things.
And I'm asking, is it a requirement of having the broad community support? For me, I'm like parental interest is very important because that directly correlates to enrollment. Even though I know that that's not a requirement, it does have some validity in terms of the viability of the system. And the lack thereof is a, I understand that time constraints, but there were a number of people, about 50 people, that sent something in. They just.
I just want to comment that I think eliminating support to only parents is slightly discriminatory. Public schools affect everyone that lives in a community, not just parents that are already enrolled, so.
I agree with your point, but 200 signatures out of the 50,000 people that live in Queen Anne's County is less than a half a percent.
Yep, no, I just think, but can we?
Granted, not everybody, because my four-year-old or six-year-old, he's not signing.
As long as the idea of using specific terms to speak about children with autism, I think that's a very valid. We should not just say parental support because it's community support that should be shown, not just from current parents and current students in the system.
But to my, because I hear what you're saying and I, and I understand.
I mean, because I, I mean, I live in Queen Anne's County and I want the public.
Oh, no, I totally get.
To make my property value go up.
I'm, I'm, I'm not discrediting, I totally get what you're saying and it makes perfect sense. The way I'm looking at it is because we can't talk dollars, because it's not a reason to deny the application, it does lead credence to the viability when you do have people saying they support it. Not discounting the fact that future children will attend the school as well, or stakeholders just have invested interest. As somebody who is trying to figure out if this is something that the county needs, that helps the application. If right now, it's a big question mark in terms of that when we're making these decisions. That's all, that's all I was asking. And I didn't know if the lack thereof of the parental interest, because if this is going to open in 26 or 27, they would be people that are already here.
Right.
So they would be parents.
Potentially.
It could also move, it could be moving in.
I know we have talked to preschools in the area and there are a lot of, a lot of preschool parents. And these would be the parents coming in in 27, 26 and 27, not the students who are currently in the system right now. Because our system is looking at, is, is, you know, K through 12, okay? Those are QA C C S would come in in 26 or 27 with kindergarten and first and second, or kindergarten and first grade, okay? It would be less than 100, 100 students, okay? When, 20 students per class, 22 students per class. So we're looking at a small amount of students at the very beginning. And we have been targeting preschools in the area. I know I specifically talked to my son's preschool and they are very interested. There are 10 kids in his class and he is super interested. There are multiple others' classes who have also asked over the past week because.
Did they send in letters of support?
I have two that were a part of that system or a part of that letter packet, which I. Here's, you guys received more letters than we did. We only got the letters that were forwarded to me.
Yeah, I, I'm only speaking for me as a member of this board. I didn't ask a single person to write a letter to say, I want to send my kids to your charter school. Because there's no way a parent is going to make that decision when you don't know where the charter school is going to be, when it's going to open. It's just an impossible thing to ask them to say they want to go there. The question for me was, is broadening the opportunity for educational opportunities for kids in Queen Anne's County a good thing or is it not a good thing? Is it good for the community to have another option in an educational situation? I didn't know that it was going to be a popularity contest and that you guys would be looking for letters and numbers of people who say, I'm going to go there. So I can only tell you, I didn't ask anybody to do that. If that was the criteria that would make a difference to you guys, I'm pretty sure we could come up with that. But we'd have to go ask parents to write that letter because that's important to you guys as opposed to the general support of a charter school.
It's not that it's a popularity contest, it is a demonstration of need. So if this school system is not meeting the need of our children and parents are looking for a different option, obviously not private school, another public school option that they can send their children to because we aren't getting the job done, then we would be listening to those parents saying, we need another type of school because what we have now does not meet the need. And that's what the question is for. It's not about a popularity contest.
Oh, can we backtrack and say that's not just parents, that's for anyone that lives in the community? Which we have shown and not just county as well, local community, because there's many people that would potentially move here with the opportunity to.
That's beautiful. That's really beautiful. But right now, this board is responsible for the 7,500 kids in this school system. And the future ones, and we're trying to make sure that we have viable schools with the right teachers and support and staff and everything that they need to be successful. Because the reason why I'm on this board is because when I did move here to this county, my kid got a phenomenal education. She graduated in four years and now she is a working progressive. And then she calls. Say her name, and then she calls. And she is contributing to our economy. And that's what I want to see for every child that goes to school in this system. And if we are, if this board is not meeting that need and we need some other alternatives, that's what we're looking to hear, but we're not hearing that from this community.
President Ben, and I appreciate your, your reason why you're on the board. I am the same way. I want, I, I think Whitney and I both can attest, but we went to Queen Anne's County schools as well, from kindergarten to 12th grade. We became successful. We are college graduates, law school graduates. We have decided to integrate ourselves into the community. And part of that, that we saw a reason to help found this school because there was a need in the community. When I am out at my son's, whether it's his soccer practices, lacrosse practices, when, when I look at choir, the Ken Island Kids Choir, I'm sitting there talking to parents who are saying, hey, you know what? It would be really great to have another option because right now there, there are problems in the school system. When we look at our kids preschool, yeah, you know what? The, there was a newspaper article, but, and we have done some targeting. But when I go into the preschool and I talk about, and I talk about our charter application and the option for a charter school, the parents' faces light up. They're like, tell me more. Well, I said, it's in the application stages right now. I wish I could sit here and tell you, I've talked to three parents and if I had their permission, I would give you their names right now. I, I can tell you, we have not only parents, but we have business owners who have submitted letters, who are current partners with QA CPS. The Edge submitted a letter of support for us because they want to be a partner. We've talked to the Karate Studio. They want to be a partner. And these are all community partners that are already working within the public school system. And they want to add to this option with our students. And so we've really tried to market and not only market, but really talk about this. And we see the need, we see the ability for people who want to have another option. When I talk about, and it's not, we did do, you know, not just community meetings, talking to parents, engaging with parents. We've talked, we've set, had parents and community members submit letters of support. But we also talk about, you know, our petitions. We did a short survey where, you know, seven, through that, the early respondents, I think 73, I think it was 73% of parents, early respondents, I'm sorry, it was not parents. It was said that they would be interested in this option. And when later, I wrote it down in my, in the paper, that 96% of them testified that they lived in Queen Anne's County. I can, that, but that was self, a self-survey. That was not, I cannot verify without, some of them gave us email addresses in that survey. But looking at that, we can see that people have interest. And here it is. When answering the question, surveys was conducted in March 2025. When answering the question, this school is an alternate, alternative approach to public education based upon a model of classical education, proven to improve proficiency and academic performance. Based on what you know, would you consider sending your child to Queen Anne's Classical Charter School? 72% of early respondents answered yes. 96 of those early respondents answered that they were Queen Anne's County residents. So through that, we do have limited survey data. We're happy to, you know, conduct further polling. But looking at that shows that people are interested in this.
Let's move away from the, the need. And I mean, I guess I need to say something. I don't mean to take it so personally, but I just feel like it all starts with the need comes from our school system is not good enough. They're not getting the answers. They're not getting, and, and it's really hard to listen to. It really is, because we are trying to turn around our school system, like, you know, get going with the new superintendent and administration. And the teachers are, we hope, you know, seem to be in more positive moods. And we had our whole team, 20 people, worked so hard on this and give us their opinion. And, and we can't ignore that. We can't ignore that. And I also, I just feel like this is not supporting our current schools in Queen Anne's County, public schools.
We, we certainly want to provide an alternative option. It's not that Queen Anne's County schools are lacking for all. But when you look at the NAPES scores that just came out earlier this week, we do see performance issues. The proficiency scores that were in the Bay Times last week, they do show that our schools haven't moved the marker.
But if you take a same sampling of our students and move them to your school, I mean, it's, you know, anyway.
We don't think that's kind of appropriate to say, because you even yourself said you pulled your kids out of our school and sent them to private school during COVID. That's all they're trying to do is give someone else, you know, an option that may not be able to send their kids to private school. So I don't feel like they're, you know, saying we have a crappy school system at all. I mean, and they're just a different.
We, we do not intend to cast dispersions or to criticize this public school system. We're part of the public school system. We will be part of the public school system. The driving force for me was when I read the proficiency rates. And I know they're of concern to you, they, and that you are doing everything you can to improve them. But to say that the proficiency rates can't be improved through alternative approaches is, I believe, very short-sighted. I think you've got to look at the situation and have as many options as possible. There may be some other options beyond a classical charter school. But we know for a fact that at least the classical charter school, the students are performing at grade level or above, and that is consistent throughout the entire country. So when I looked at what could I do as a, as a concerned citizen, a volunteer, that's all I am, and someone who cares very, very much about our public school system, I wouldn't be here if I didn't. And because I do, what I discovered through a lot of research was that the classical charter school is one option that seems to be working. And I said, wow, why don't we have a classical charter school? I will work for that. I will get involved with that. I will commit to that. I will see, why can't we do that here in Queen Anne's County? That's, that's one solution. It may not be the, the end-all, the be-all, but at least it's one solution that I know will work. And, and all we ask is a chance to make it happen. And, and you know, you ask, well, how many students are going to go there? I can't tell you how many students, but I can tell you what happened in Anarundel County. I can tell you what happened in Frederick County. I can tell you what's happened in every other county in the state that gave the approval for a charter school. The waiting lists were beyond what they could accommodate. And, and it, it didn't happen over six months. It happened overnight. When that charter was approved and the notice went out to the public, and in our, in our situation, we're going to emphasize that through the direct mail.
Right, our county is also much smaller than a lot of those other counties. But, but also to go on that, and you said that that's not what you're, you were saying and everything like that. And to kind of caveat a little bit, Carrie said, your delivery was a little off. You were very accusatory of saying that, whether that was the parents' opinions, but it was coming out the school district saying basically, you guys weren't meeting the standards, we had a lot of issues. So I can see where Carrie was coming off with saying that scenario, just in that, because your delivery was wrong. It was wrong in that scenario. Whether you meant to say it or not, maybe in the approach in the future, if you're going out to the community, we don't, that, that's an angle that that you, you did come off kind of accusatory in, in saying that we didn't meet the needs of the students, we had poor test scores and, and a bunch of things like that. It was coming off pretty wrong.
So before we continue on, we, we've had a lot of discussion back and forth. Both sides have made, asked questions and had questions answered. And at this point, I would like to know if the board is ready to vote or if they need a minute to have a small discussion. How would we like to proceed?
I have one thing, Ms. Kate. I did move my kids back to public school because they put together a PowerPoint presentation on why they wanted to return from private school. I did just move them there.
That's fine, but don't attack them when you did the same thing. That's all I'm saying.
I'm not attacking. I guess I'm trying to understand what you're saying, like.
What I'm saying is.
What opportunity am I not giving them?
You took your children out of Queen Anne's County public schools and were able to send them to private school, correct?
Yes.
And then you brought them back, correct? Okay, that's all I'm trying to say. You said that they were trying to come across saying that we can't give our kids at this school system the best opportunities. That's why they're trying to come in and steal all our kids. And I felt that you saying that was a little bit hit the critical. That's all I was trying to say.
All right, I don't, I guess I took it wrong.
So I will go back to my previous question. Are we ready to vote or do we need to have a small discussion?
Are we allowed to have a small discussion?
Yes.
In public. Yeah, out here, you can have a discussion. Keep discussing.
Yeah, I don't think we're allowed to discuss.
Can I, can I, can I talk with you in the hallway? Can I talk with you in the hallway?
No, I think it has to be.
I think we have to, you have to talk.
Oh, no, I know, but I, I think there's.
By the way, the 30-day fit, it's from the state board opinion. It's not in the statute. It's a 30-day, but which makes me wonder if, you know, that was the result of an appeal, if the parties agree to extend it. I don't know, I can't tell you if the state, how the state board would rule, but the state board in a 2005 case said, charter agreement must be completed within 30 calendar days from the date of the decision approving the charter application. Now, you know, if both parties agree to make it 90 days, I don't know if the state board would be amenable to that, especially if no one's appealing and bringing it to the state board in the first place. You know what I mean? It's not like, it's not a statute. It was from a state board opinion.
That's great.
So I just wanted to go back because that question has not been.
And we certainly would be amenable to that, to extending the charter. And we certainly would be amenable to that, to extending the charter agreement timeline.
I just feel like thirty days is a lot to hash out everything, it's a, it's a quick timeline, so. It just helps both parties, if this was to be approved, it helps both parties on each side.
Absolutely, especially if we, uh, plan to open in twenty-twenty-seven, if that, the opening date is agreed upon.
So at this point, we might as well vote. Yes, sir.
So I, I think we just need to say what happened too. So I'm bringing a recommendation to the board. Okay, so, just so we're all, we all know what we're voting on.
So it would, it would be.
The semantics, right?
It would be a motion to either accept or reject the recommendation of the superintendent to deny the charter school application submitted by the Queen Anne's County Classic, Queen Anne's Classic Charter School.
And so, I just want to add to that too. So that, that recommendation for denial is based on the application that was submitted, the, um, the, um, I'm going to forget all the steps, but the, the application, the capacity interview, the follow-up communication, the two, the two follow-ups we had right after the capacity interview. It's based on the deficiencies that the team found in the application and those follow-up times through the interview. The team did not, um, reconvene in the, since the September third meeting. So the denial is based on before that, it, my letter hasn't changed since last week. Um, and I, I would just, because I'm afraid of soundbites and things and how this, uh, sounds out in the, in the world and the public. I also put in that recommendation, or in the letter that I wrote the team, that I, even though I'm recommending that denial, and it follows up on my point from last week about holes and going more depth in the application, that I would encourage the applicants, if the board upholds that denial, to come back in a year. Uh, because I think you can keep building on it, um, frankly, to make your application stronger and come back to us. So that's what it's built on. Um, and that if the board does not follow my recommendation, which the board can do whatever they want, that we would then consider, the board would then consider each waiver individually as well.
And when, if, if they were to reapply, like how does that work if they had to reapply, is there, it's May?
May.
It would be the April and May piece again for next year, which would still put on the timeline for that fall twenty-twenty-seven. And I would never recommend starting the application over again. It would be building on what is already done to go more depth into what the deficiencies that were found by the committee.
All right, so I'm just gonna read the motion. And we will vote in whatever direction we will vote in. For those who would motion to accept, hmm, I'm going to go back the other way. Motion for those who would reject the recommendation of the superintendent to deny the charter school application submitted by Queen Anne's Classic Charter School. All those in favor, raise your hand, uh, rejecting Dr. There, first of all, I already know that.
As for a motion, and someone will make a motion, whether, whether, it's one way or another.
Yeah.
I'm like the big difficulty. Yes.
I move we adopt the recommendation of the interim superintendent and the charter school application review committee to deny the application of the Queen Anne's Classical Charter School due to significant and substantiated deficiencies in academic planning, operational capacity, and demonstrated need.
All those, wait, is there a second? Second? All those in favor? Hame race.
I'm an O. So that's Ms. Bent, yay.
Correct.
Michael, yay.
Correct.
Fatherland, yay.
Correct.
Ms. Kate, nay, Mr. Dryer, nay.
Correct.
Okay. So the, um.
Motion. Recommendation is upheld.
I just want to thank everybody on both sides. Um, everybody did a fantastic job. And just to be on the record, um, I, my approval would have been based on contingencies and then upholding, um, Dr. Kibler's recommendation of going through each win, uh, waiver individually. Because I believe that, um, some are okay, but some, no, some of the waivers definitely needed to come back to the board. Um, not totally had, I know you guys want total autonomy, but if you're essentially going to be under us, I felt that some of them still would have needed to come back to the board, so. But thank you, everybody on both sides.
Thank you for giving us the time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thanks. Uh, can I make, we're done, right?
Future meeting is September the, October the first?
Yep.
Um, is the next open board meeting at six P M.
Making a motion to, for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to adjourn the September tenth open session at five forty-five P M.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.